So if you would let your mics up, please. Any councilor concerns at this point? Or review of agenda questions?
And consent.
And consent? Agenda and consent?
We only have one item on consent. And I think you're getting a brief presentation on that.
Consent is the UPAA with Washington County.
Correct.
All right.
Actually, sorry. Maybe I do have a question.
Counselor.
I noticed our final item, that's the new business, is Resolution Number 2727. And I was just curious, because it's not on a work session. I know that we talked about this before. We did a letter. And it's coming back because they've requested a resolution.
Well, council directed staff to bring back a resolution after we talked about it in support of the county tobacco licensing.
Bringing back a final work product.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
That's it.
All right. Let's jump in then with Frog Pond Meadows. Which I asked a question about how many meadows we have in town. Confusing.
Good evening. There we go. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. This is Kim Reibold. I am Associate Planner with the city. At tonight's public hearing, I will be giving a presentation on the Frog Pond Meadows subdivision. This is the third subdivision that we've reviewed in the Frog Pond area. It's a 74 lot subdivision, just to the north of the previously approved Stafford Meadows subdivision in the southeastern portion of Frog Pond. The requests before you tonight are an annexation request and a zone map amendment. The annexation area includes both the Frog Pond Meadows geographic area, as well as the church property on the corner of Stafford Road and Beckman Road, as well as a portion of the school district property, just to the west of the site. Both of those are included, as there will be a partition plat for both of those to transfer some of the land between each to include in the subdivision. With that, I'm here to answer any questions you have in advance of the public hearing tonight.
Thank you. Counsel, questions about the process or about the facts?
I was a little bit curious about the transfer that you alluded to. And I wondered if you could show, kind of point it out on the map to help us identify those segments.
This map should show it pretty well. So this is the Frog Pond West area. You'll see this area here, Sub District 12. That is the property currently owned by the church. This piece here, it's really this whole property shown as land banked right now. This is currently owned by the school district. And so essentially, they actually have this whole property is the school district property. So this line here represents where the western portion will be partitioned and presently kept by the school district for future development as a park. This piece of the school district property here will become a part of the Frog Pond Meadows subdivision. The same thing right here. This is approximately where it is. This will be partitioned. This piece here will be four lots across from Stafford Meadows and developed as part of Frog Pond Meadows. The remaining piece here will be retained by the church. There was a previous, in the previous Stafford Meadows development application, there was a tract along here. And so part of that was, it was either going to be transferred to the church or developed with the Stafford Meadows piece. And so they're essentially swapping the two pieces.
Okay. Thank you.
Welcome.
Can you outline the annexation process that works with public hearing without any other votes?
Sure. So when you have consent of 100% of the property owners within an annexation area, as well as at least half of the electors within that area, you're able to proceed forward with an annexation request without it going to a larger vote. It can be done through the public hearing process like we are doing right now.
And tonight is the public hearing that fulfills that requirement?
That's correct.
And I had some confusion. I asked about how we have part of this staff report talking about Frog Pond Meadows, but the legal description is all about Stafford, what is it called?
Stafford Meadows. Phase two and three.
Stafford Meadows, Phase two and three, under a completely different name. It's one and the same or what?
Yes. So what happened when the applicant had been looking, they've been in the process of looking at a larger area of properties here and thinking about long-term phasing. So initially, they had carried forward the Stafford Meadows name with just subsequent phases, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. So the first approved piece outlined down here is Stafford Meadows. What you have in this area up here had been initially their Phase two and three. So I think when they had put together that initial documentation, that was included with the annexation request. It was prior to the point at which they decided to switch the name to Frog Pond Meadows. The applicant probably can speak on their naming choices a little more, as I understand it has to do with some of their other permits that they have to obtain for development.
The underlying concern of my question was the legal question about whether the description of something under the one name lined up with the request to annex under a different name, or whether there's...
But they're referencing the lots, right? Like the tax lots?
No. Are they? I mean, that's...
You've been asking the question.
I'm not...
But there are attorneys here tonight. When we get into the hearing, Mr. Robinson is here and he can talk to you about the name change.
Part of it's internal, isn't it? I mean, we took in an annexation application with a legal description or not with a legal description?
With a legal description.
Was it a lot by lot? Or what did the application list?
So each property owner, so each tax lot in this case, has to fill out one of the application forms. So we have a signed application form. You know, as for the annexation request, you know, naming isn't really one of the criteria that we look at for the annexation request. It's more involved in the actual plat part of the process that, you know, you submit with a tentative plat. So this legal description here is really just an outline of the legal boundaries of the property that are to be annexed.
So the annexation is different than the platting?
Correct.
Annexation is the people that own the property at the time. Presumably, that's all being aggregated by a developer, right?
Correct.
Okay.
All right. I guess I'm looking for the staff's assurance that all of these bases have been covered, because I could not follow that line of connection from the written documents.
I think you have those assurances.
Yes. Yes. I know reading a legal description is something that probably only surveyors take joy in. But we do have, the exhibit that's attached with it as an exhibit to that legal description clearly shows the meets and bounds of the land that is included as a part of the annexation request. So what will happen subsequent to the annexation is that that legal description does go to the state. They too will review that and make sure everything looks good. Our city engineer has reviewed the legal descriptions and has deemed them to be accurate for the purposes of identifying the property.
Okay.
So I think that's the time allotment for this one. Cool.
All right. Anything else we need to know? Counsel, you're good?
Good. All right. Thank you.
City signage and wayfinding plan. Which has been on council goals for what?
Six years.
Five, six years.
This is the...
More than a while. More than a while. You're correct.
I'm very excited.
Oh, is that the stone?
And it comes with a leaf.
Did you pull that from my yard? Just kidding.
You have very good taste.
Yeah.
It's very heavy.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Knapp. City councilors, thank you very much. I'm Chris Namus, who's the city's Community Development Director. And this is Mary Stewart with Alta Planning and Design. We have a very brief presentation for you tonight. We have four specific questions that we seek your direct input on as part of this process. So tonight, we are seeking direction on font style. We have side-by-side examples of three font styles that we would love to receive specific direction on. We also have the question of the rock. There were two choices that we brought forward. The Planning Commission conducted a public hearing last month. And they have recommended a certain rock and a certain faux Corten material for consideration as part of the signage and wayfinding plan. And the fourth item would be, we have a limited amount of dollars to roll out a Phase One demonstration project. And we are very interested in hearing from council on what you think might be an appropriate and desirable Phase One implementation for the signage and wayfinding plan. And we have a couple of recommendations to suggest as well. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mary.
Thank you, Chris. We've been working on this for quite a while now. We've come to you folks before. We've incorporated a lot of feedback from both the city council and the Planning Commission into all of these parts. But as you can see, we are one step away from wrapping this up. Just to remind everybody, emulating stone was the preferred wayfinding sign family concept. We went through a lot of processes to refine those. And you've probably already read through all of this in the report.
I'll stop on that one.
Stop on this one. This is...
We have not showed this to you before. This is the, these are the I-5 monuments that exist in brick today. So this is an illustrative example of how those monuments could be retrofit with the themed materials, Corten steel, pinned letters, and the rock veneer replacing the brick veneer. So because this is brand-new, feedback, thoughts, ideas, these are significant structures out there at the interchange. And one of the desires was to have these signs match the rest of the signs throughout the community. Although, the price on these is pretty significant. So it's obviously a very significant price tag to go in there and do this to those existing signs. So one of the things that we also would love to hear from the council on is, does this look like something that is of interest to do? Or would the money, the limited dollars that we have, be better off spending some other way implementing the larger citywide and signage wayfinding plan?
And we'll cover cost on that in just a little bit.
Thank you.
So the two stone samples, you each have one of each of these stones on both sides. We put these to the Planning Commission. The McGregor Lake ledge stone is from Montana. Silver Falls ledge stone is from Malala, Oregon. And the McGregor is a smoother finish, which is what he has. And the rougher finish is the Silver Falls ledge stone. They're both equally durable. They both come in a variety of colors and shapes. So these are wall examples to show you what the colors would look like. The Silver Falls does appear more porous and does seem to hold on to water better. So it gets a lot darker when it rains. And anecdotally, I've been watching stones in my neighborhood and seeing how they handle everything from rain to moss. And the more porous stone, at least in Portland, gets a lot mossier. So Planning Commission preferred the Montana stone for the smoother texture.
Cost difference?
Cost difference was really minor between the two.
Even though one's local and one's out of state?
Even though one's local and one's out of state. Yeah. So their preferred stone was the McGregor. And then for the signs, some of the signs are going to have a faux Corten finish. And that is primarily because we have signs that are on sidewalks. And we don't want the real Corten rust to get all over the sidewalks and make everybody question why we did this. So we have Corten with that faux finish, which will be applied to a metal about that thick, which is pretty sturdy. Careful of the corners.
Here in western Oregon, we're talking pretend rust.
Pretend rust. Exactly. And the preference from Planning Commission was the Arizona Sunset Rust, which is the larger of the two samples that is over here. And the choice was made because, and they're both powder coat finished, so they both have similar durability. But they felt that the Arizona Sunset looked more like weathered Corten.
It's a better Corten.
Like that. Which is, all the signs that are going to be in landscape are actually going to be Corten.
So we want rusty metal as part of our...
Yes.
That was part of the process.
That was part of the process.
Yelled at that answer, yeah.
And then the other question we posed to Planning Commission was, we had a variety throughout the process of ways of drafting out Wilsonville. So the "Welcome to Wilsonville," it actually is in the large gateway and welcome monuments, but it's also in small scale on our sign toppers, on the top of the vehicular sign, on the top of the kiosk. On the kiosk, you'll recognize the one in the middle, the "Welcome to Wilsonville" with the branded Wilsonville logo. The other two are just a standard MUTCD-friendly font. These signs don't have to, the "Welcome to Wilsonville" part isn't required to use an MUTCD font. So the question we put to the Planning Commission was, what is the preference? And the preference was for the middle, Wilsonville brand font, all caps. That font only comes in an all caps font. And the sense was that especially for the gateways, and because this is Wilsonville, when you enter Wilsonville, it should have an important, there should be a weight to that, an importance to that. It should stand out. And all caps is deserved in this condition. So just going through, in large format, what that looks like versus that, versus that.
When it's printed, will it have that shadowed effect?
It will have a shadowed effect. Because those are pinned letters on, well, on the Corten, it'll be standing out from the sign. On the kiosk, I'll go back here really quick. It is not going to be, is not going to have a drop shadow because it's going to be internally lit. So that's actually going to glow. Wilsonville will glow.
And that's what the thin pieces are?
And that's what the thin pieces are. Exactly. So everything that's over a sidewalk, so park signs, because they'll be in the landscape, will be Corten. Welcome signs, gateway signs, will be Corten. The vehicular signs, partially because it doesn't really make sense to spend that kind of money on a sign that's really up in the air, so far you can't touch it. It's also a lot of weight to put that high up in the air. Those will also be the aluminum with the faux Corten finish. And then the pedestrian signs that are over sidewalks, these will all be the aluminum with the faux Corten finish. And so the Planning Commission preferred the Wilsonville brand font for the reasons I mentioned earlier. And then just quickly showing you that we have updated wayfinding destinations per city council and Planning Commission feedback, including new neighborhood districts and making all the text changes that were requested. And the wayfinding sign placement plan has also been updated based on new destinations and feedback we received on spreading the wealth, so to speak. For cost and phasing, generally speaking, we broke these into corridor chunks. If you've ever been following wayfinding signs, you'll notice that if there's a sign missing, oh my gosh, you really notice it because you end up not knowing for sure. If you're, once you get used to following the signs, you get to a point where you're kind of lost without them. So we tried to do the corridors in their entirety so that once a corridor was complete, that would be an easy-to-navigate route. And in the cases of the kiosks and the gateway signs, those are separated out for a couple of reasons. For kiosks, this is a construction issue. Because these are going to be fabricated, they're going to have a finish applied. Doing them all at once will really help provide a consistent look and feel. If you were to do a couple and then go back a couple years later, if you used a different sign fabricator or a different finish, the chances that they looked different enough to notice, there's a high probability. For consistency, this is really for the I-5 signs. And this is, if you're going to do them, you really want to do both. You don't want to do one and have it nice and new and refurbished and have the other one be the old, kind of corporate-looking, as we heard from the stakeholder group, kind of look and feel. So do those both at once or hold off and do them later? And then, so for our Phase One, then we, after that, we took the priority, what seems like the priority travel routes that both had the most destinations, as well as the most traffic. So part of our wayfinding project goal is always to try to provide alternate ways for people to get about town and not always rely on a car. And especially, Wilsonville Road and Boonsbury Road and Parkway Ave, they have lots of opportunity to get people moving about in a different way. So for the demonstration project, the question is, we have $50,000 set aside right now with potential ask for up to $150,000. What would the council priority be? Is it to do all of the kiosks? Is it to do the kiosks and the gateway signs? Is it to do all of Wilsonville Road? This is, we outlined it based on, you know, the three criteria we outlined up there. But we want to hear from you as well. And so just to sum it up, these are our four big questions. And we'd love to hear your feedback.
Okay. You asked a whole series of questions. Can you flip back to the start of your thing?
I sure can.
And let's hit the questions so we have a visual to go with our answers.
All right. Ledge stone.
Okay. Stone. Cost is similar. Durability, from what you say, is similar. One wets out more longer, might get mossier.
One's going to stay wet longer. One's probably going to get a little mossy and probably...
Which one's, which one's which on that?
The Silver Falls is the more porous stone. And that's the one, if you feel them, one has definitely got a rough surface. Yeah.
And the other's smoother.
And the other is smoother. So if we want, you know, everything can be power washed, for sure. If it gets mossy, you can just power wash it. But, you know, is there...
But you have to do it.
But you have to do it. And...
So Planning Commission recommended the McGregor?
Correct.
I think the whole rustic thing has a mossy look, in my opinion. And I just would, it's so close. What is it?
I don't know. It's a mystery.
It's a mystery.
Happens every meeting. It's probably one of the iPads. That'd be my guess.
All right. I just like always want to default to local if possible. I mean, it's in our region. I mean, it's, we're a unique, special place. And to like, keep those dollars in our county would be kind of cool, if possible. They are really similar. The whole rust look, to me, already has the similar colors. And it has already kind of that more rustic look that maybe goes along with the metal finish. If that's the direction everything's going, it looks like. So I don't know. That's my two cents on it.
I was just going to ask, all the different materials, Public Works has weighed in in terms of maintenance and all that?
Yes. In fact, one of the early renditions, we had Gabian form filled with river rock. And that was vetoed, pretty much by maintenance.
I always think, I begin with the end in mind. Because, you know, I've gone out with the crews and worked with them in the fields. And I sometimes hear that things could have been better.
Everything could always be better.
Practically, we got thumbs up.
Yeah.
How's Raco?
I guess, I mean, I appreciate the idea. So it's a good point about having a local product and, you know, helping, if it would be helpful to local economy to pick something that's closer to home. However, I am thinking about needing to clean. Although, you can't clean it. It's expense, because it's hours, it's work hours to clean something. So I don't know how much that factors in, how expensive that would be over time. But I think we anticipate that these will have a long lifespan too, right? Because they're very expensive projects. And one other thing that I like about the McGregor as well is it, there's more contrast. And I think that's something that really is aesthetically really nice about the design of the sign. And when we look at some of the mockups, to have that contrast, especially as we all know, it's wet quite often here. So if, once this gets dark, because it'll get darker than this, all of a sudden, you're not going to have that contrast between these two materials. And I think, you know, you'll kind of get this more blob look of the sign instead of having a really nice sharp contrast between both the metals and the finishes, but the color variation as well. So my aesthetic take on it.
So what Counselor Acravall said. Plus, speaking of someone who has personally taken a five-gallon bucket and a scrub brush to go scrub down signs that weren't getting cleaned often enough to keep me happy, I don't think that it's likely we're going to be able to keep up with the maintenance, you know, on an ongoing basis without really working at it. And I, you know, I think that the Planning Commission, you know, really considered this. I'm happy to go with the Planning Commission.
So next is the Corten finish. The weathered steel is a smaller chip that you're handing around. And then the larger chip is the Arizona Sunset red, the rust.
Which one did the Planning Commission pick?
And the Planning Commission picked the Arizona Sunset Rust.
The bigger one, yeah.
I agree.
Yeah. Yeah. I think we're there.
It mimics the color variation that we actually see.
Yeah.
Yep.
That looks like a cheap countertop from the '70s.
And then the Wilsonville font, or the MUTCD all cap font, or the MUTCD title case font?
They picked the middle one?
They picked the middle one.
I concur.
I can live with that. I might have argued for the right one, the right-hand one. My primary concern about all of these in this presentation is, it feels to me like the logo's too small.
Ah.
And I don't know what it would take to make the logo bigger if, I mean, I'm wondering, gee, do we have to be symmetrical? Does Wilsonville have to be centered on there? Could it be offset to the left a little bit? Could, I mean, but without seeing it, I'm not the guy to answer. I just wish the logo was more obvious, more prevalent.
What is the dimensions of that? How big was the actual logo?
Oh, gosh. So it looks like on this particular sign, it was around five and a half feet tall. So I would guess it's, I want to say this one was 12? Was this one 12 feet wide? We have much more detailed drawings for construction.
Order of magnitude, size of the logo, like 12 by 12 inches? Something like...
Yeah. So about 18 inches. Like each letter would be about, or sorry, about, not 18 inches, about 10 inches tall.
The letters, huh?
The letters. So like each double... Oh, so the logo? Yeah. More like 18.
By 18? Something like that? By 18, something like that?
Something like that.
I just wish they, they more balanced the, the Wilsonville letters a little bit, I mean, not, not as big, but, you know, I could see it being half again as, the logo being half again as big as it is.
Fifty percent increase.
Something like that, just so that, we worked so hard on that logo, and it has meanings, and it has elements that I hate to just...
One, one thing to consider is that capital is always reminding me of being yelled at.
Right.
Like, it's just like, Wilsonville, like you're being yelled at, and there was a little bit more elegance, I thought, to the far-right font, even though I know it doesn't have the same presence that you made. You made a great point with presence in these areas, too. Want to be a little bit, like, punched, but, I don't know, that was just my initial thought. Got to my thoughts, like...
And that ties back to our branding that we did, the Wilsonville font, right, that we have on our website?
Exactly, exactly.
There's some continuity there.
Yep. And there is no title case font with the Wilsonville font, it's all caps.
Oh, it only comes that way.
It only comes that way.
We only scream in Wilsonville.
Folks felt like it was important enough that it needed to be all caps, so...
Yeah, I, I would say that the middle of the Wilsonville brand font would be my preference because it matches our logo.
Yeah.
And so, I think, you know.
Okay.
I agree with that.
All right.
All right. So, now down to dollars. What is the priority demonstration project for you all?
And this is a relevant topic, because we're building our budgets right now.
Exactly.
So, the recommend, recommendation number one is recommended by staff, by consultant, by Planning Commission, by whom?
Consultant, so Planning Commission didn't have any comments.
But it's based on criteria that you've established.
Yes, yes. We went through a prioritization process that weighed things like destinations and traffic and the availability of facilities for walking, biking, and driving, and then that was vetted with city staff and others, got handed around quite a few times to understand what the true priorities were, and then that turned into this phasing plan.
So, I can see the logic for the, the kiosks and your comment about doing them all at once, and, and all of that makes sense. The problem is that the proposed budget you've presented would encompass that and nothing else, you know, you can't do one and two together and stay within your proposed budget, and so, what do you do? You go on down until you find something you can do? Oh, you could do number four, maybe, with number one, or you could do number five with no, I mean...
Or you just ask for a little bit more and you do all the kiosks.
Well, I mean, not necessarily constrained, I mean, only, only in that what we budgeted so far, right?
Correct.
It's not a constraint on future budget years, other than, it competes with other...
So my, my feeling about the gateway signs is, they're the best-looking signage we've got, even though it doesn't match the new motif, I don't feel that we have to get rid of them right away. There's a lot of other things that I think are more lacking, and, and I'd be happy to come around later and upgrade, or renovate, or redo the gateway signs, you know, and I would feel good about doing some other projects to move this forward and come in another budget year on that.
Well, it's going to be a multi-year, if we implement the entire program, you're probably talking about a five-year.
No, no, but I'm saying about the gateway signs, the number two project there.
Sure. I think that's why we're here, right?
Yep.
Like, if you had to pick one or two things off this list, what would they be, based on the criteria? And you, you know, Mayor, that we've had conversations with the chamber about people not being able to find subdivisions and...
Right, right, and so that's, that goes back, you know, many years, we've had these discussions about trying to do that. To me, that long-running argument would say, well, number three, Wilsonville Road, showing where stuff is, would be one of the high priorities, but I don't necessarily think I would say that was higher than the kiosks.
I, I agree, I think our current signs by the freeway with the brick are beautiful, and I wish, they're beautiful, and maybe it would, we're way late in this, and making everything else match those, so we don't have to change them.
I think it is you, Counselor.
It's me, it's the beard.
I think it's...
Try moving your, moving your iPad away from...
I don't think it's the beard unless it's metal.
Or your phone, too.
It's the, maybe it's, it's the weathered steel stuff.
It might be the, yeah.
Throw that out of the room.
I have a big voice, can you hear me?
But it has to be recorded.
Oh, it's on the recorder, okay.
That's actually better, yeah.
We're good, okay.
Maybe it was the steel.
It's the steel.
Electromagnetic field.
Yeah, it's my mutant power. So, I don't know, we're, we're here now, and these are our choices, but like, those are still really beautiful, and I don't think they don't complement what we already have, and, I mean, even if they're not uniform, I mean, they're beautiful, and people already paid for those, and that's a big expense, and I don't even see the necessity to touch them, I mean, they're beautiful. So, those, all those other options on there, those seem like they might be a priority, like the mayor said before, we touched those big I-5 signs, if ever, but that's my, I feel about it.
I agree with a lot of what you both said, I think that the kiosks, so that's, we've got 50,000 now, that would be 22 additional to what we have now, so that seems within reach, right, to me? And I think it seems like an engaging kind of project to get out there. I think that our, our residents would appreciate it, I think, you know, I mean, it would be something noticeable new in the community, too, so that brings value, so, so I like that. I agree that we have nice-looking I-5 gateway signs, however, I don't, this could just be my personal point, every time I drive past it, I see the old logo on there, and I wonder, yeah, that would be my, how much does it cost to take the hand with the sprout and swap it out for the W with the sprout? Because I think branding's important.
It's true.
I really do, and I think that we're a really polished community, and I think having that mismatch does not speak to being polished, so I, I wonder if we could swap that out. I mean, I understand that the background would still be brick versus, you know, kind of our new aesthetic, but at least the logos, I'd be curious how much it would be to swap out to our current logo.
That wouldn't be throwaway money, would it? Those logos would be fabricated independently of the sign?
The, the logos are fabricated independently, I'm not entirely sure what it was, what it would take to remove the old logo, what kind of attachment.
Sure.
If you have a big leg, thing to...
Yeah, we don't want to have something left over that you can see around the other...
Looks a little tacky, looks junky, yeah.
Yeah, but we could definitely have them take a look and...
I'd just be curious about that, right?
Yeah.
Find an affordable way to keep what we have, like reuse and recycle and keep what we have if it looks great, and, yeah, because the logo's a great idea.
Well, the renovation project, which, although, I mean, it's, it's over 100,000 there, right, but, but that project truly is to kind of just put a new facade, a new, it's not building a new sign entirely, right?
It's not tearing that sign down.
So it is already kind of a, a good way of reusing the bones that we have of the current sign and putting the new materials on it.
This stone's like a veneer, and the metal's like a veneer, and so, you would almost be like, just kind of laminating over what's already there.
Right, yeah. Strip it, strip it down to the base material and then go back with the new material.
Not a construction expert.
No, no.
Yeah, okay.
And there may be more that we could do, even with the pin letters, I'd throw that out, just if, what if we put the Wilsonville branded font in that existing concrete space?
With the logo.
With a new logo, and then it really begins to tie into the other materials rather than...
Just leave the brick alone?
Yeah.
Does it, go ahead.
You, you could do the brick for the stone exchange, you know, in another year without...
Oh, for sure. Faze it in.
Yeah.
And you recall, the original monuments had some directional signs on them, and I've spoken to Mary about, when you get off the freeway, you're kind of clamoring left to right, right? So picking a few good destinations and maybe come up with a nice contrasting plate on each of the bases that, so I think we could take a crack at, at a much more cost-efficient approach to retrofit those that would really tie in nice. So I think that's a great suggestion, thank you.
Sure.
Just do the logo in the right size.
Yes. Bigger is better, yes.
Is the font different on the existing big freeway signs than what the current new font is also?
And it says City of.
So that middle piece really has to be addressed as a whole.
Right.
Yes.
But we have a subcontractor sign company who can advise us on this stuff and give us good input.
All right, we need to move along, does that give you directions, sufficient to move forward? Something else?
So is the demonstration project recommendation doing all of the kiosks? I heard that from one commissioner.
Yes, does that sound like a reasonable place to start as a demonstration for the kiosk? I think, I think your point is valid, I think it would have, it would generate the most buzz and probably...
I'm, I'm in favor of that.
Yeah.
Are you in favor of that?
And they're spread throughout the city, which is nice.
Okay, all right, you got everybody on the kiosk.
It helps from a tourism standpoint, too, which ties back into our tourism plan.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. UPAA, we got a short one on this, is there any questions?
Mayor, what I've asked Ms. Bateshaw to do is, hold that till the end, because we've already talked about it. Get through the more pressing issue, which we have a consultant here as well.
Basalt Creek Parkway Extension Alignment Study, good grief.
Yep.
I'm not sure which one that is. Who gets this one? Hello, Mayor, Council, my name is Miranda Bateshaw, Planning Director with the city, and with me this evening is Russell Knobel from Washington County, and the county is beginning work on the extension of the Basalt Creek Parkway. As you know, the 124th extension opened early this year, and the next phase of the project will be extending the road from Graham's Ferry to Boons Ferry Road in the Basalt Creek planning area. And so, as the project started, and they approached staff to talk to us about the project, we thought it would be a good opportunity to have them come and give you an overview of what's going to be, where this project's headed over the next few months and how you all can be involved.
Thank you, Miranda.
Mayor, Council. Thanks for having me, I apologize, I didn't bring any asphalt with me to pass around, paint or anything, but, yeah, so, jumping into this, this slide kind of shows that the bolded yellow are the projects that have recently completed, those were a portion of the Basalt Creek Transportation Refinement Plan projects, the purple that's up there is the Basalt Creek Parkway Extension, which is the future project that we'll talk a lot about here.
It was just either these or the mouse, that's fine.
Yeah. So I mentioned the Basalt Creek Transportation Refinement Plan, I know a couple of you here were around for that, the others you probably know about that, but just real quickly, there were five agencies involved back in 2011 and 2012. Those five agencies would be Metro, Washington County, Twalton, Wilsonville, and ODOT. Out of that Transportation Refinement Plan came 18 projects. Those 18 projects had, were broken down between short-term projects, which 124th, Basalt Creek Parkway were in the short term, they had medium-term projects, which would be to widen 124th to five lanes, and widen Basalt Creek Parkway to five lanes, and then long-term projects, which are crossings over I-5. So, the major project in that, though, really was the east-west arterial, which is the Basalt Creek Parkway that's shown there. So, basically, the, the project's going to extend the Basalt Creek Parkway that you saw on the map from Graham's Ferry over to Boons Ferry. Currently, environmental work has started on, for the design, so for you, Council, you may see some of that work, you know, possibly from either me, or staff, or online, or public questioning about that environmental work. We expect FHWA to concur on a categorical exclusion September 2019. So, those of you that don't do this every day, categorical exclusion, basically, the FHWA has, has used that term to group a bunch of projects that look a lot alike, and basically, they have, they don't involve significant environmental impact. If it's something other than a categorical exclusion, that's when you get into the EAs and the environmental impact statements, the EISs, those are larger, major impacts, this is not that type of project. We expect final design after the categorical exclusion to start up in 2019, and then, we'll talk about funding here, but if funding came in for construction, we could start the summer of 2021 and be complete by 2024. What is, what is it that's going to be constructed or designed at this point? It's a five-lane, limited-access, arid roadway with bike lanes and pedestrian facilities. Those aren't detailed out what those bike lanes, pedestrian facilities look like, but that will come throughout the design of the project. Then, the big part of the project is a 600-foot bridge that crosses the Steely Ditch, Tatman Creek, called, there's a couple of different names for that, you guys probably have a name for it as a planner, so...
They like to call it the Basalt Canyon around Harry.
The Basalt Creek Canyon is what it was referred to during the planning with Twalton.
Okay, okay, so that, using the right term, I know there's been a couple of different things thrown out there and, and stuff, so. And then, specific right-of-way needs would be determined during the design, but it, it is highly likely that one residence, one home would be purchased to, to provide, closer to Boons Ferry where this connects to Boons Ferry. So, for you, as we start to get into that right-of-way conversation, and we start showing maps to the public and stuff, you know, you potentially get a phone call or two from residences, the, you know, and just questions about what that might look like. So this is a really big slide, and people tell you never to do this, so I'm gonna just, I'm just gonna talk through it real quickly. Basically, what this is, what this is saying, I, we, we continue to hear, what about the environmental impact? What about, what are you gonna do about the environment? And so this is just showing that, that we are working on the environmental work, we'll have to look to address any impacts that come out of this environmental work, and basically, we're required to get permits from the Army Corps, Department of State Lands, DSL, DEU, and National Marine Fisheries, so there's a, a lot of other agencies that we're gonna have to work with to make sure we are not harming the environment, or we are, you know, doing something to offset that impact. And you guys, feel free to ask questions in the middle if you want, or wait till the We went out and looked for artifacts, we did 49 tests, basically, we found no significant artifacts out there, we've conducted historic resource analysis, we found four sites, but really, three of those sites weren't, there's a term for it, but they weren't basically deemed a historic resource. The one that was is a Carlon School, that's closer over by Graham's Ferry, and you'll see where that is here, I think, on the next slide. Now, Twalton has expressed interest in moving that historic structure, but not, they've not found a location to move that to, so the project's gonna really look to try to avoid hitting that structure, so that, that's kind of the goal as we move forward. So here, it's probably hard to see, I don't know, do you have a laser pointer at all?
You can...
Any?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Scoop it around.
So, right here, thanks, Chris, right here is that Carlon School, so, the, the blue, all of this blue is kind of showing the study areas, we move through this environmental look at, at where this road could actually be. So, basically, the further south this comes, you start to impact that school, so, you know, chances are more likely it's further to the north, and then, as you get further to the south, you guys are very familiar with this piece of property over here, I'm sure, and you start to dissect that piece of property, which is not necessarily, but these are kind of the conversations that are gonna take place over the next six months to, to nail down a more defined alignment in, in this smaller area. So, funding, talked about this, so about $35 million for the entire project. So far, MISTIP, our MISTIP program for the county, the three E, dedicated 3 million in funds for the project, we've received close to $6 million in regional flexible funds, which are from FHWA through Metro, assigned to this project because of its freight situation, or, you know, the attraction of the freight. And then, basically, what I was gonna ask to start with is, if you guys had 25 million, we could use it, but definitely, we're gonna have to find, you know, funding to construct this, and, and so I think that that's where, you know, we would look to you guys to kind of support us in that process, you know, there's additional opportunities for these reasonable flexible fund grants. Rumor has it that earmarks may be coming back to the federal government, and so possibly, you know, pushing for an earmark for this project, regional bond funds, there's a lot of talk about the regional bond coming up and what those projects are gonna be, and then, local funds such as TDT and future MISTIP commitments. So that was it. So, any questions?
All right, Council, questions?
Can we go back to the, the map that you had?
The first ones.
Like the overhead view?
These maps, here, or the...
Sorry, not the map, then, the image, yes, thank you. So is the gray section, is that the bridge?
That would be the bridge, yeah.
Okay.
So that kind of gives you an idea of how long, you know, you're probably looking at about 2,000 feet of new road, 600 feet of bridge.
And so, did you indicate that this is gonna be built as five-lane right from the start?
Yes, yeah, and the reason for that is, you know, the bridge, the bridge is a big part of that, and so we don't want to build the bridge, the three lanes. The other section, this way of Basalt Creek Parkway, if you've been down that, that bridge is really wide, that... That would accommodate five lanes in the future.
But we only really built three lanes of what will eventually be five on that section, right?
Correct, yeah, yeah. And, you know, and that's one of the conversations we could have is do you, you know, do you stripe it for the full five lanes when it opens or... But most of the work for the full five lanes will be completed.
And the jog at the right end is to line up with Green Hill across the Boons Ferry?
Yeah, basically, that's really to try to limit the impact to the property on the east side there and try to take advantage of Green Hill Lane as much as possible for the future. If, as you recall the discussions with the Basalt Creek Parkway, if the road ever does go over I-5...
Push all the way across the freeway.
Yeah. That's one of those long-term projects, 30 years from now, if and when that area ever comes into the...
We said 30 years, but that was 10 years ago when we started on that.
Well, okay, so 20 years now.
Does the bridge potentially dictate kind of the alignment where it...
Yeah, so, you know, I kind of mentioned this blue area here is all the study area. So one of those things we'll look at is the rock layers that are here and here. And so we did a bigger study during the Basalt Creek Transportation Refinement Plan, and it's kind of an hourglass shape through here. So this is the narrow part of the hourglass. So the bridge really is the smallest it will be in these... This general location. So it may not make a huge difference just based on where the bridge would be located at. It may be other issues kind of determine that.
Have you selected the bridge type yet?
No.
Okay.
Way too early.
Yeah, we just... Just for your benefit, the county did some preliminary environmental work just to get a jumpstart on the ODOT process. We met with FHWA, and they kind of said, yeah, this really looks like a categorical... It's taken us two years to get a contract in place because we had to go through ODOT. That contract just... Or the consultant, OBEC, just got buy-off to start, I want to say the first week of January. And so, yeah, we're just kicking off all that kind of stuff now.
Counselor West?
My question is a little bit what's in the packet and not so much a presentation. I don't know if I just talked to you offline.
I'd just ask it now, yeah.
Okay, so in the packet, I don't know if this is a bump in the road and I didn't... I... It seems like this is... Planning's, like you said, had gone a long time. The mayor might be able to help educate and speak to this. It talks about there being an appeal for this with Luba in the packet.
I think you think about the other...
We're talking about the same Basalt Creek?
Basalt Creek.
Is that different than this presentation?
Land use, sorry.
That's a land use issue, not a transportation issue.
Yeah, no, that's a good question to ask.
It's... We're watching things as they develop, I guess, is where it's at at this point.
I guess my question is, because it says it, ultimately, if it goes their way, I mean, it would put a big... It would really be damaging to the project. And then who and why are they... I was just kind of curious, the background, maybe a little bit around that.
Okay, so the background is that there was a difference of opinion between the two cities in terms of what the land use should be on both sides of the Parkway. So that was mediated by Metro and then appealed, I believe, to Luba. Luba basically ruled on our behalf and I think it's...
Well, the appeal ended up being withdrawn for the central sub-area, the appeal on Metro's. There was an initial decision in favor of Metro in terms of the process.
The process, yes.
But then the appeal was still issued on the decision, and then they removed... They withdrew their appeal on the decision and are entering information into the record, both on Wilsonville's comprehensive plan amendments as well as Twalton's comprehensive plan amendments.
And so I think the appeal will be on the comp plan side when Twalton... Well, that's what they're going to appeal, right?
So the appeal pertains to how the land is used on a piece of the land that's on the Twalton side. It's on the north side of Basalt Creek Parkway, not on the south side.
Right. So that is the single issue, is what is the land use on the Twalton side? It doesn't... The Parkway's still in play regardless, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, the Parkway has had the planning and those decisions made that could have been appealed at that time. This really is just a design discussion moving forward. We'll still involve the public. We'll still have public comment. We'll still talk to you guys probably. But the Luba type appeals are beyond for this project.
Yeah, it's just on the land use, not on the bridge.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you so much. Something else? Question?
One other question about the school. Because you mentioned that the Twalton Historical Society was interested in moving the school, but maybe didn't have a site currently.
Correct.
So is it true that there could be several possible outcomes? If... Could one outcome be that they find a site for the school after the road is built? Would it then be moved after the road is built? Like, do you know what I mean? How much flexibility and what kind of timelines do we look for that decision around the school?
Okay. So the flexibility really becomes if we decide on altering where it's shown now and it comes further south and we impact that school, the project would be forced to, most likely forced, to move that school. So the project would assume that cost and would have to find a site to move that school to. If the alignment avoids the school, which is where we're going to try to be, that gives everybody a long time to try to figure out what they want to do with that school and move that school. I told Chris that that school's his if it's south of the road, so...
Yeah.
Is it on the national registry?
I don't know for sure if it's on the national registry yet, but it... I mean, it's clearly could be put on there at any moment. And that's another process that we could go through. If it's not on the national registry, I can check on that.
Okay. Because that would change the game a little bit if it was on the national registry.
Yeah, yeah.
So has anybody mentioned relocating it and making it an interpretive center for the Basalt Creek Trail and ecosystem, you know, access?
No, that's the first time I've heard that.
Recommend that because it's going to be on the Twalton side.
There you go. Move it to the Twalton side.
All right. Thank you so much for keeping us up to date on that. We'll be watching as it goes forward. So Ms. Bateshale, do you have another quick discussion here on...
Yes, it's very quick. I am back just to... I was here two weeks ago explaining to you all the steps in the process for implementing Basalt Creek. The first one has arrived. It's this evening before you in your packet is the urban planning area agreement that we'd be updating with Washington County. It was last updated in 2007. So essentially, this update is to incorporate the Basalt Creek Planning Area and provide us with authority to approve future annexations and development in that area. So I am just here to see if you have any questions before you consider it on your consent agenda this evening.
It includes the railroad area, too?
Yes. So the...
Future study area.
Right. But the urban planning area agreement includes both the Wilsonville portion of the Basalt Creek Planning Area that's south of the Parkway, as well as the West Railroad Area in our urban planning area with them.
Other questions?
You don't have to stay for the council meeting.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Cosgrove, anything further?
Seven minutes before we meet.
All right. We'll call adjournment for work session then at... What does that say up there in the dark?
Six fifty-one.
Six fifty-two, fifty-one, fifty-two.